We are live. Commissioner, you're muted.
Thank you. I thought I unmuted myself. So hi, everyone who is joining us today. Welcome to the first Social Innovation Commission meeting of 2022. We're excited for everyone that's able to join us today as we discuss some really important issues and continue to ensure that this commission brings forth a great innovation in Cook County government. So without further ado, I will call this meeting to order. So in compliance with the Governor's Executive Orders 2020-7, 2020-10, and 2020-18, attendance at this meeting will be by remote means only. Instructions on how to attend the meeting and participate in written in written public comments are provided on the Cook County Legisstar webpage at cookcounty.legisstar.com. The proceedings will be able to be viewed at HTTPS at www.facebook.com/cookcountymission on January 6th today at 4:30. Written comments of any of the items listed in the agenda are accepted at seventhdistrict.office@gmail.com until 24 hours prior to the meeting. Written comments provided during that time period to this meeting may be read aloud or summarized at the meeting. Three minutes per comment will be allowed through, and we would make every effort to ensure that all statements are read in their entirety. Copies of the agenda and items listed to be considered at the meeting are made available electronically at the Cook County website, which is cookcounty.legisstar.com. Please note that the Cook County building located at 118 North Clark Street, Chicago, Illinois 60602, has reopened with restrictions to the public until the date to be determined. Of course, due to the circumstances with the COVID-19 and its health concerns that it has raised. So what we'll do now is we'll call the role. Can I have someone from staff make sure to call the role for the attendees?
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner Freeman?
Present.
Commissioner Aclepe?
Present.
Commissioner Brutus?
I am present.
Commissioner Males?
Present. Happy New Year, everyone.
Commissioner Killen?
Present.
Commissioner Haynes? Commissioner Haynes?
I'm not a commissioner. I'm a guest from Portland, Oregon.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Commissioner Jonin?
Present.
Commissioner Norington Reeves?
Present.
Commissioner De La Runtis?
Present.
Commissioner Cooley?
Present.
Commissioner Raymer?
Present.
Commissioner Craticals?
Present.
Did I miss anyone?
Yes, the Vice Chair, Lane, I believe.
Commissioner Lane.
Present.
And I am Commissioner, Chair Naya is present as well.
Commissioner, you have quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any public testimony that has been submitted?
No public testimony was submitted for this meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda we had was approval of the minutes. Unfortunately, we were not able to get those out to all commission members on time. So we will actually hold off on the approval of the last minute. I know it's been a while since we've met, so we'll definitely circle back at the next meeting. And we do want to give some updates, and then I will turn it over to our Vice Chair to introduce our speaker. If you can give me a quick second. Pardon me, I needed to get some water. So again, welcome all commission members who have been able to join us today. This is the first meeting of the commission. We hadn't been able to meet due to the first technological constraints, and then there was a lot of scheduling issues that we had last year and during the pandemic. So we're excited to announce that we're officially now going to be meeting on a monthly basis. We know that we still see that there are increased cases with Omicron variant and other public health issues, but we found it to be extremely important to continue to have the conversations, especially because Cook County is at the forefront and in a very important position to really make meaningful change. You know, as we, you know, hopefully this till end, as we're doing boosters, as we're doing the recovery, Cook County will be receiving $1 billion from the federal government. We've received, you know, millions of dollars through care funding, and we want to make sure that this commission plays a very important role. And I know that we've discussed that previously on ensuring that Cook County is again is at the forefront of innovation, that we're looking at ways that we can invest in people in the community, in the county, in the workforce. So I thank you all so very much for joining us, for, you know, recommitting yourselves to the mission of this commission. So I appreciate that. We do wanted to make just a quick announcement. We are in the process of onboarding a few other members. We did have some vacancies, so we will be onboarding. There's two members that are going to be in the committee next week, which we're going to be moving to approve, and we will be moving forward in the next month to onboard some other members. So those were the only immediate announcements that I had on my end. I do want to, you know, pass it along to the Vice Chair, Mark Lane, who has been instrumental in getting us up and running again. I cannot thank him enough for helping us make sure that, you know, all the commissioners, you know, he had one-on-ones with most of you, if not all, at this point, and just kind of helped us revitalize and really focus on, you know, what the commission is going to be doing. So I'm going to hand it over to him if he has any other announcements, and then we are going to introduce our wonderful guest speaker today. We are going to have a presentation from the Community Investment Trust with Mercy Corp. So we're excited about that and our special guest. So Vice Chair Lane, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for your kind words and for your leadership. And happy new year to everyone. A pleasure to see all of you. And I very much enjoyed our one-on-one conversations and the energy and enthusiasm each of you has demonstrated in seeking to drive positive social change in Cook County through the commission's work, as well as all the other things each of you does on a day-to-day basis. Couple of important points I do want to raise operationally. One, Commissioner Anaya has already alluded to, and that is we are moving forward on a monthly schedule. You have received now a schedule of our meetings for the balance of the year. This is important for a couple of reasons. One, we want to ensure that our work continues with momentum. And where we do meet at less frequent intervals, we would, seems to me, be denying ourselves the ability to accelerate the progress we are looking for. So the monthly meetings are going to be important. The pattern that we are going to be pursuing is each month we will have an expert witness come to testify with actionable public policy recommendations that the commission is to be invited to incubate. And that incubation should, in many cases, lead to ordinances or regulations that have teeth. The idea here is to ensure that the county board gets the full benefit of our intellectual firepower, our experiences, and our knowledge and relationships so as to make decisions that are going to be most meaningful to the county in addressing the social problems that we face. In meeting monthly and having these individual witnesses come, each with a separate proposal, although you'll see over the course of the year, some of the proposals will be connected conceptually to others. We are going to be departing from our historic committee structure for operations. And instead, we are going to be at least experimenting for the near term with an ad hoc working group approach where we're going to be more flexible, less rigid, and have commissioners volunteer to participate in incubating those policy recommendations where they see their opportunity to add the greatest value. So each of you is going to be listening, hopefully today and in each month, intently to the proposals that are being advanced, and raise your hands to join forces with other commissioners who similarly see themselves as helping really frame and shape the recommendation, integrating it into our legislative and regulatory landscape. Beyond the commissioners, each of you also is invited to recruit other people outside the commission who may have relevant expertise or experience to help make the most of these recommendations. We are by no means limited to the commission in terms of these working groups. The commissioners, of course, will be the only ones that have the authority to vote on proposals and resolutions, but that is by no means intended to suggest that members of the public don't have an important role to play within our work. So each of you is encouraged as you consider our witness today and what he has to offer, as well as future witnesses, and to think of other people that you might want to bring into the process and leverage their expertise, their relationships, their platforms to make the most of everything we do. As it happens, Commissioner Freeman has very graciously volunteered to lead the working group that will follow today's presentation. So thank you to Commissioner Freeman, and I'm sure she will welcome the participation and active growth from all of you who wish to join forces with her. I myself will be doing so because you will hear that the presentation today has some legal elements where I think I might be able to add some value to make this, to realize the full potential of this proposal within Cook County. So having said that, I'd like to introduce our guest, and at the conclusion of his presentation, we'll invite the commissioners to ask questions of him to gain greater familiarity with what he is offering. I'm also hopeful that he will be available to us after today's meeting as our conversations unfold to contribute to that work from his perspective, which you'll see is quite expert and experienced. So I welcome and appreciate the participation today of John Haynes, who joins us from Portland, Oregon, one of the advantages of Zoom. Mr. Haynes is the Executive Director of the Community Investment Trust, which is an initiative of the Mercy Corps Global Initiatives Team. He's been on their team since February 2018, and many of you may know that Mercy is a global efforts to drive positive social change in some of the most economically distressed areas of the world. Previously, he was the Executive Director of Mercy Corps Northwest, the domestic arm of Mercy Corps for 15 years. He was Vice President of ShoreBank Pacific. ShoreBank, obviously, is a name all of us in the Cook County area recognize. And ShoreBank Pacific was a startup sustainable development bank in Portland. Before that, he was Senior Finance Advisor to the Czech National Environmental Fund in Prague, and he was previously the Executive Director of the Trenton Business Assistance Corporation and Economic Development Loan Fund in Trenton, New Jersey. And he worked in various corporate and banking and commercial lending positions before that. So he has a wealth of relevant experience, and he's going to talk to us and give us some insights into what I believe to be one of the most important initiatives we can take on, and that is allowing residents in economically marginalized communities to build equity through investment participation. And you would think that might be an exhumor, but the whole point is to build wealth. And as we see the disparity in wealth and the disparity of income that plagues our society in so many ways, this becomes a really intriguing tool that we might deploy here in Cook County and where the Cook County Board might see itself as having a role in catalyzing and facilitating this kind of an initiative here. So I very much appreciate, John, you're joining us today, and I will turn the platform over to you.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks for ferreting me out from Portland to come be with you in Chicago. I've been to Chicago several times, and I love the city very much. Although I have to say, having been there in the winter, I prefer March and October the best. But I love your city, and I've had some contact with the Mayor's Office, Chicago Community Trust, and a swarm of grad students that seem to be busy with their schools but working from their homes in Chicago. But to talk with you all is a super big pleasure. Now, I had sent, Mark, you a PowerPoint. What might be better than looking at my face in my houses is if I can share my screen with my PowerPoint, and I can run through the highlights, the who, what, where, when, where, and how.
Very much appreciate it. If staff might share the screen with our speaker, we would appreciate that.
John, I believe you could do that now.
Okay, let me try to do it. Are you seeing that?
Staff, if you can make him a co-host again. I did see that it did notify us that he was a co-host, but if you you can try one more time.
Did that come up for you?
Yes.
Okay, finally. All right. I'm sorry about that. Mark, how much time do I have? I want to make sure.
As much as you need. This is the most important item we have.
Okay, well, never tell me I have as much time as I need because I can go on for hours on this, but I will keep this.
Forever would be fine.
Mark, you're a nice guy. But let me just put my timer here at 12 minutes, and I'll be succinct. So we have plenty of time for your questions, which I'm sure you'll have. You know, essentially, what we are is a product that we developed. These are basically the talking points on what we feel like we accomplish in Portland, and we're working in a dozen cities now at feasibility phase to replicate. Basically, we cover a lot of territory with the Community Investment Trust to engage a community at the family level, individual level, and provide a way to connect people to the asset class of only real estate within a prescribed geography by zip code, in our case of four zip codes. We're four years and two months into our pilot here in Portland. And, you know, essentially, here's what it is. It's commercial real estate, commercial retail real estate. The neighborhood, as I said, is prescribed by four zip codes. We think that proximity matters when they can go down to the building, patronize the businesses, have that mutually reinforcing characteristic of I own that building, I'm going to get my haircut, get my taxes done, go buy lotions and creams, get some health support, et cetera. The key factors that Mark had mentioned are legal and unique to this is that we provide the investors complete 100% loss protection and liquidity. So as an investor, they can get their money out anytime they want with complete no-loss provision. We legally had to do that without getting into the details because we are offering, in each case, the replication model is for replicators to register a state-registered C corporation. And this is kind of a dumb moment for me. A few years ago, when we initiated this, was you can't offer a stock offering to an accreditor or low-income investors unless you do a provision, whether it's a government guarantee or, in our case, a direct pay letter of credit, which stands as a kind of a source of guarantee or support for the investors. We don't use that LC, but it stands there to provide the opportunity for us to offer the stock offering. The investors get a short-term dividend annually. That's averaged 9% a year. That's based on the performance of the building. And then their long-term share price changes by calculation. We do 100% of the reduction of debt just as when you own your home, you own that part, you just paid down the bank debt for. And then we do a calculation based on the change in value, and we value the property on the income approach. So it's very tethered to the performance of the building, the rents, et cetera. And a key aspect to this, if I take you back several years, I initiated this with the concept that that people were motivated by real estate, but it was getting entirely difficult to purchase a home, increasingly difficult even in this neighborhood. This is the most diverse neighborhood in Portland by far or in the state, and it's a high percentage of renters. And yet gentrifying home prices are getting out of reach, but people are motivated by investing. But when I did some surveys and spent time at affordable housing agencies with some grad students speaking multiple languages, people said they don't save regularly. Nobody was investing. And I asked them, what's changing in your neighborhood? What's missing? Do you invest? No. Why don't you invest? We have 10 bucks at the end of the month, and we've got 100 bucks, and it's not regular. What do we do with that? We don't understand investing. And one woman said, you know, that's for other people, not us. And I thought, well, what if you could invest? And I pointed to a building down the street, not this one, but another one that was dilapidated, but people knew it. And I said, what if you could collectively own that? And their eyes lit up and said, how? When? And I said, I don't know. But we went back to the drawing board and came up with the CIT. So it's worked. Some quick, I'll give you some highlights in a bit, but what we're doing with other cities right now, we've got a list coming up, but it's basically a big swath through the Midwest, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, Memphis, Kansas City, St. Louis are the ones that I'd call in your swath of the country. But then extending to Baltimore, Albany, New York, Fresno, Seattle, and other places in Oregon right now. And we go through this process with them. This is essentially not us sweeping in with our expertise and doing the work, but coaching a local organization or consortium of groups together to learn the aspects of what we went through in building the CIT. And this has turned out to be a really great capacity in learning to put the asset of billing a CIT into their community. Ultimately, then, when they get a property and have secured which geography they want to focus on, they plug into a platform that we have that helps them with the legal setup. And then the key is, is we've developed a stock offering and transfer agent platform partnership. So all the investors go through that. Nobody touches cash. It's bomb-proof from terms of audit, transparency, liquidity, and protection. Now, our property, when I say our, we've got a lot of love in this property, but we were just a portion of the subordinated debt to buy this building. So the way it works, this was a building we purchased out of, with, we're a nonprofit. We're a big non-governmental organization that works globally. This is the only national domestic product we have, other than a CDFI loan fund and other things we do in Oregon, Washington. Then I ran for years. This incubated out of that. So we bought a property out of foreclosure for 1.2 million. And that was in 2014, end of 2014. And we bought it with down payment, and then we knew it needed deferred maintenance and some tenant lease-up costs, et cetera. So it's actually an equity shift. That 450,000 is what my organization put in as subordinated debt, and then an impact investor at 230,000. And the investors, every month, there's 260-something investor families now. They're buying out that 450,000 every year. I mean, literally every month as they make their investment. They make their investments on the first or their 15th, their choice. This is a mid-century modern building, and 1962, it's large. If real estate means AP, it's just shy 29,000 square feet. So it's got a good footprint and a diverse range of spaces that can fit for kind of our anchors or hair salon. A tax preparer, a number of tax preparers in multiple languages, a lower-cost funeral preparation business, and then a range of tenant creation of nonprofits. And it's become a de facto East African community hub. This is a big area for Smali, Eritrean, Ethiopian. And the high school down the street, five blocks, was 100% white high school in the mid-'70s, late-'70s, and it's now 70 different languages spoken at home by the students there. So super interesting, diverse neighborhood, and this building, I think, reflects, and we were told, you know, what kind of businesses are needed and wanted. We had, we helped curate the tenants in the building to fit people's needs and desires. Now, we track impact on, number one is, does it work? Does the building produce an income to generate success for the investors? And as I mentioned, it's generating a really decent dividend and a very healthy long-term return. The share prices in four years have gone from $10 to $17.05. So, you know, that's, it has to rest on a good return for folks, but at zero risk, as I mentioned, that's a hell of a return, frankly. It's kind of knocked it out of the park. Tenant success, we're seeing now that we have enough investors that they're patronizing and activating the space, kind of creating an ecosystem, support and activity at the building that the tenants are want to be in the building. They see a value of having it owned by the community. And then what is community health and engagement? Is it safer? Is it healthier? We've had a number of health events at the building during COVID, masks, inoculations, mammogram, a whole bunch of things. It's really become kind of a health-oriented place over COVID. But it's also active with some dance, arts, music, food, welcoming events for community centers, and it's activated the community in, you know, really cool ways just from a building. I think the most inspiring thing for my small team, but for the financial performance, which of course has to happen, is that we survey people every year on these issues. And we ask people when they sign up for the investment, if they vote, or if they activate their voice in the neighborhood. After becoming an investor, after becoming an owner, 68% say they're voting regularly when they didn't before, and they're activating their voice. This is even during COVID. They're more active for traffic safety. Gun violence is a problem out there now. And they're more active than they were before, and we ask, well, why is that? They say it's because I'm an owner. So here's some of the numbers. We teach this owing to owning course, and we actually don't teach it. We have community leaders facilitate the course. It's a peer learning between eight and 12 people take this course. It's actually a requirement, and again, people ask for it. We have it translated in a number of languages. That really helps people build trust and build the knowledge of what the investment is and what investing is. Our last session in the class looks at the risk and return of a range of investments. So what we hope is that it opens the door for people to become more financially active and at some point even move their investment out of the CIT into a mixed fund or some sort of a 403B, some sort of a retirement or other kind of investment, and then restart their investment in the CIT. um, a retirement or other kind of investment and then restart their investment in the CIT. But the demographics are touching exactly who we wanted to. Uh, first time investors, people that have never invested in anything anywhere. Uh, majority women. It's very often the family investment, but the women, much like in international development circles, the women more often take action for the family than the men. And, and we're touching, you know, low income. Eighty-nine percent of the household holds make less than forty thousand a year on a family basis. Forty percent born outside the US. We have two hundred and sixty-six investor families now, and they re-subscribe at an eighty-eight percent rate. Every, we were at ninety-eight percent, but over the years, some people have cashed out, restarted. And some have cashed out and used it for the purposes they intended. Um, but the uh, the value of the investing of the investment itself, people have put in three hundred and twenty-three thousand. This was as of the first of December. And their shares, if they all cashed out today would be worth seven hundred and seventy-one thousand. So a really meaningful amount of money is being aggregated for families that did not, in most cases, have any network before. Some of the things we've learned after four years and, and worked with some of these other cities, none of which have started one yet. We've got a handful that are close. Is finding the right property. Um, that's, you know, obvious in real estate. Um, and then, and then getting a bank that'll do the direct pay letter credit. Um, proper capitalization really means getting the right impact investor money. And possibly even grant money at the base of the capital stack. We didn't do that. But uh, we're coaching other cities to take that risk out of it and get some philanthropic debt equity at the base. Uh, the whole process with the class and other things needs that it's not us, even though people know Mercy Corps well in the city. Uh, it really is the community leaders that stand out and take ownership and are the leaders of the voice and the connection and trust with the community. And then our class and how the property itself builds an ecosystem. Here's where we are in terms of uh, some of the other cities. We cart charge twenty-five thousand for this coaching capacity building session. And there's the cities we're working with now. Um, I'll stop there because I hit my twelve minute mark, but one of the interesting things we've done as a collaboration was Cresti Foundation, which is the Flint, Michigan uh, Kmart Foundation money. Um, they asked us to work in four cities they'd been working with for quite a while under initiative they've done for the last several years. So they asked us if we could work in Memphis, Milwaukee, Minneapolis and Fresno in one session as a collaborative. And we took a deep breath and said, boy, uh, you know, they're asking us to, let's try it. But we've been doing individual cities one at a time. And what we found is doing it, you know, but for the time difference with Fresno and Tommy are right, that the cities really got a lot out of sharing their experiences together and working through the, we do break act sessions for specific, you know, property search, but otherwise they gained a lot out of the collaboration. So in other cities, sometimes we're seeing two or three work groups work together. In Chicago, that could be something that's fascinating to have different neighborhoods, look at the same process together and learn and compare and contrast their experiences. All right. A few pictures of the building right there. And then I'll open it up, Mark and, and crew for.
Now, let me, if I may, thank you so much. It's a very inspiring presentation and congratulations on your success with this. I just have a couple of clarifying questions and then I'm going to open it up to the other commissioners. Uh, one, um, the lawyer in me requires that I ask you, apart from the twenty-five thousand dollars, are there other fees or expenses that we would be incurring? Should we find a way to collaborate with you?
Yeah, right now, um, we charge three percent. If somebody initiates a pro- project, we hand over the whole package of how to do it. Important in that is a shared learning design, modern evaluation of performance tracking. So you can compare your performance, report, report back to funders, to the community and compare and contrast your performance with others and learn together. So it's kind of a community practice fee. Um, and it's a base fee from the start that's three percent of the transaction. So in our case, one point two million would have been, we would have paid thirty-six thousand to join the network. And the key thing in there is getting that investment portal set up for your community by zip code. So you can plug your investors directly into, into a system where nobody's touching cash, nobody's touching a check. And the, and the start. That's, that, yeah, with that said, we're, we are talking with some big funders that are talking about potentially paying that portion. Um, but we, you know, we need to get a breakthrough with a bigger funder to, to fund you, either a portion or that fee for that three percent engagement. That's kind of our model, earned income model, so we can keep the lights on while we build.
I get that. And I'm a, I'm a big fan of social enterprises, so I get it. Um, the uh, and, and this feasibility study, which sounds like the first part of this. Um, could you, could you send me when you have a chance, what that uh, includes? I see it has multiple steps, but I, we'd like to get a better appreciation for what that might include if you could.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, then I, I have two other little questions and then I'll kind of allow others to jump in here. One is, um, how does this uh, complement uh, what the Cook County land bank might do?
Um, yeah, is, are they a community land trust or?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, the best way I can explain that is what a land trust typically does is kind of holds holds the value in time and kind of stops the clock. Um, and we're, we're allowing the market forces to generate kind of the value of the property up. And they kind of hold it in time and then put some deed restrictions on the transfer of the property. In expensive real estate markets, we're seeing the opportunity for a community land trust to buy the land underneath the building and take that cost out of it. That's the only way we're going to be able to work in the Bay Area. For instance, there's some high cost markets.
Right.
So I think there's a compatibility, but it may be at, at cross purposes with the investment. If you, you know, depending on some of this legal structure. But it takes the land value out of it. So I think that's something that could be, you know, valuable, particularly I think some of the things that have emerged in other markets is where they're using transit districts and transportation and public property um, to put into the mix. And they would retain maybe ownership, either give it off and that helps reduce the cost because it's a grant to the corporation. Or to retain some kind of long-term control over the land and take that cost out of it. And the, the CIT is just the improvement on top. So I think there's an opportunity there.
It strikes me that the land bank may be a logical strategic partner with the commission in kind of evaluating this and seeing how that fits into this and how they can operate in a complimentary fashion. And the, the final question I want to ask, at least for now is um, I've not heard much of a role of government here. Uh, are, are you familiar with any government participation in such initiatives? And if so, have there been any uh, mandated uh, uh, community benefit uh, pieces that need to be sliced off for community participation as you know, part of some uh, uh, zoning or tax subsidy or some other uh, perk or benefit or offset?
Not yet. There's uh, Memphis and a couple of cities are looking at their tax increment finance system and, and having that flow more appropriately towards the community and not the developers. Um, but you know, that's something I wish you would have done twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago. Um, there has been government interest in a few places and just extending some of the subsidy for developers towards the community through a CIT. We haven't seen it yet. Um, I had mentioned.
We would be the first, we would be the first government units to pursue this if in fact we decided to pursue this. Is that right?
Right, right. You would.
So that seems to me that from a piloting perspective, uh, and a modeling perspective, this may be particularly attractive to certain kinds of, of philanthropic funders that would like to test this.
It, it would. And obviously Chicago is a, and Cook County is, is one big uh, animal and very visible and highly well-known and observed by everybody for for so many reasons. So yeah, you could be a catalytic kind of example.
Patrick is saying we need to engage with the land bank and that's exactly my thinking as well. So thank you for that. So let me turn this over to any commissioners who might have uh, questions.
Vice Chair, um, Lane, I'll jump in really quick because I, I think you brought us some really important points. So first of all, John, thank you so much for your presentation. I think um, we have seen constantly that appetite of um, incentives and ownership of community members. Um, and, and having a stake, right, in, in their community. And I think what really struck me is their engagement, like you mentioned, uh, once, you know, they are owners, once they are partners. Um, and how that really does change the, the, just everything from civic engagement to, to, to all types of, of, of areas. And I, I, I did have a question um, about the feasibility study, but it looks like Mark kind of addressed that. Um, I think it would be really interesting, um, vice chairman. If we can figure out, uh, how Cook County potentially can look into having a feasibility study around this. Um, I, I do believe that the, the natural partner here is the land bank. Um, absolutely. Uh, given the fact that, you know, they, they have been up and running for a few years. Um, uh, but this does seem like, uh, like it would be an additional push on how to get community members to really invest. And I think that idea is, is tremendous. I'm extremely excited, uh, John, that, that you came and presented before this body because I think this is definitely the type of excitement that we need uh, in the commission and a project of the state can really, um, uh, really get us uh, at, at the forefront of, of, of innovation and looking at how we can, how Cook County can really play a, a very crucial role around transforming how we look at, at this type of investment. So I just wanted to make those comments and I, I don't know if there's any other commission members that can jump on.
Commissioner Freeman, who's claimed rights in this baby. He has some questions. So let's, let's turn it over to her, please.
Um, thank you. Um, this was a, a really good presentation and extremely timely. So I sat on a call earlier for the Chicago Prize. Um, and they specifically mentioned this as an example around a community wealth building model. Um, and so for me, as we think about it, so one, I, I am working on a group Chicago Prize application both as a community resident as well as just a general stakeholder. And so in initiatives like this where we're talking about community education, particularly in areas where there has been consistent disinvestment, um, disenfranchisement. What have you been seeing is the length of time for education? And how, and I know some of these projects haven't really taken place yet, but what is the trajectory? Post-development going live? How long are you proposing that education continues through the development?
Well, the education, the, the specific course moving from owing to owning. Um, we've done, we used to do it with two sessions in two. Um, like usually on a weekend when people could come, we adjusted to when people fit and when the facilitators can do it. We pay the facilitators who are again, community members, um, twenty-five dollars an hour, both to prep and, and teach the course or facilitate it. It's very much a peer learning course. Uh, so once that class is over, uh, it one thing we've found is that it, putting people into an owner's mindset is just a starting point. And when they engage in, in the investment, they get super interested in, wow, what if I cash out and put it into a 401K or something else? And then come back and restart my investment, which is just exactly what we wanted is to get people on a path of ownership and family net worth wealth building. Um, albeit modest for most of us, but you know, these, you don't tell somebody that's been invested a hundred bucks a month for four years, that that's a modest investment. That is you know, serious business for the family. And so I, I think it engages people on a long-term learning. Obviously a project team that's going to manage one of these, a key lead organization. And I'd say if you get a land trust involved, uh, my experience with the land presses, they're super savvy, but they're kind of baked into their, their idea of, you know, like maintaining existing cost period. And so there can be a benefit of maybe getting a, a CDFI or a uh, community financial institution or a housing agency, or somebody that has some savvy with respect to real estate, not just the land. I'm, I mean, it depends on the people in an organization, but sometimes a collaboration for the feasibility could be, could be fruitful. Um, the other thing, and I'll just throw this out in terms of some education that I think is super inspiring out of Colorado Springs. Is that they are specifically orienting the investment for um, to include youth, middle and high school kids. And their school district has taken it on as we want to incorporate some alternatives in education, not only in the obvious math, but in career paths and some other things. And they've got a foundation locally that's going to do a match for some service learning projects. And they're taking a, you know, one of these eighties, nineties strip malls that are just vacated because the big box stores aren't there, et cetera. And there's only so many Goodwills and workout facilities you can put in those. And retooling one of those with a kind of a specific focus on, on youth oriented enterprises, businesses and health wellness and even getting some um, you know, some public support, public entities in there. And then deep paving the parking lot and making space for events, gardening, other things. Um, but then when the students um, graduated, they would take their investment and use it for, you know, post-secondary schools or whatever they, they wanted and needed after graduating from high school. So I think there's an education thread that isn't just with the feasibility studies and isn't just with the uh, owing to owning course, but kind of extends over time. And it's gonna be fascinating to see what different communities come up with.
Thank you. And I believe Commissioner Males has a question.
Thanks so much, Mark and John. I really appreciate this presentation. I'll be very brief on this one. Uh, the first is just an observation. When you said that the, the city and county are uh, one animal, they're really, um, if you came out here more than just a couple of months a year, you've noticed that they were two animals. They, they are different. The mechanisms are different. And this is a unique body for uh, many counties. I don't know what you have in Multinorma County, but one of the things we have here are some processes that I think you can take advantage of at the regional level. I would also say, you know, we have many economic tools that are available to develop uh, properties that have not been uh, uh, developed for some time and are off uh, producing the taxes that they might. That's, that's just number one, that Cook County is a great place for you to have landed, thanks to the, the commissioners and thanks to our chair and vice chair. The, the other thing is, um, I take it all the investment is very hyper-local. There's, is there a plan to ever uh, combine? If I invested in Portland and invested in Cook County at one time, could you move? Um, I don't know how you do this legally, but move from one municipality, one county, one state to another and have a larger investment pool because the returns might actually be uh, better. That's my question.
Um, yeah, the answer is no. Um, primarily because this is complicated enough to have created. Believe me, it, uh, it's taken a lot of, a lot of willpower, um, and persistence. So we, we just envisioned it being not like a REIT. In fact, I was going to create a mini REIT. But the localized part of it is completely unique. We think the localized part of it is critically important to the success of the business and the inducement to the investors. Um, and so it's, it's like a mini REIT that's, that with protection but localized. Um, and it's complicated enough. So that's one reason why we have. Now, if you leave the, if anybody leaves the, the neighborhoods and zip code, they can, they can hold their investment, but they can't add to it. So we don't.
On that point, on that point, John, and going back to the two animals of county and city. In, in your work, uh, potentially uh, with, with us at the county level. Uh, because there's so many zip codes outside of what is the city's six oh six. What, what can you do when you go municipality, municipality? Some of our depressed communities are rather small. Um, and you are looking at serving a very large population, especially in our Southland.
Yeah, I think the way our portal works, fortunately or unfortunately, is by zip code. So in other words, we made it easier for people. You know, if you call, the idea of a neighborhood or either, nobody knows what census tract they're in, right? Um, and if you call it a neighborhood, it's too easy to say, oh yeah, I'm in that neighborhood. Well, you're three blocks away or you're right across the street. That doesn't work. So we had to do something that articulated that everybody understood. So we did it by zip code. Now do we have people coming to us and say, you know, I'm right across the street. Can I? No. And we, we just had to draw the line somewhere. In our case, our four zip codes, you know, our entire state is smaller than Cook County, just to put it in perspective. Um, so our four zip codes for our investors are roughly a hundred and eighty thousand people for the last census tract. And that's fairly dense for Portland. Probably barely touches the surface with, with your county south of the south side, but um, yeah, it may be a constraint, but it's, it, it, it makes it more efficient for the portal and it makes it more transparent and easier for the investors to consistently understand.
And it's a pure play.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we have a follow-up question from Commissioner Freeman.
Oh, um, I put it in the chat, but I was asking about the banking partners that were within the capital stack. So I know you mentioned, um, the philanthropic money and on the call they mentioned earlier, some program related investments. And on the call, they mentioned earlier some program-related investments. But were there any traditional lenders that are involved in the capital stack for the development?
In the initiation of this, no. Actually, the bank that, my bank from Shore Bank, it was called Shore Bank Pacific. You know, and our, our parent company was Shore Bank, the South Side, Ron Griswinski, et cetera. So they're good old friends of mine, and they've been up to see the building Ron has, who's still in the South Side. But the, the bank that bought Shore Bank, Beneficial State Bank, they put in the initial capital. So we did an interest-only loan to get the building approved and didn't have the direct pay letter credit in place yet. Because we didn't have a legal path to do it quite yet. We bought the building without getting the legal path set up because it was, took some work with some attorneys to do that. Anyway, because they couldn't do the direct pay letter credit as a smaller regional community bank, we went to another bank, which was a, a real estate focused bank that did direct pay letter credits. And they wanted to do it for community reinvestment reasons. It's in a distressed census tract. Now, the, the big laws, the big CRA laws don't give banks credit yet for this kind of contingent liability. But there's banking legislation kind of percolating to upgrade or some federal effort to upgrade the CRA, Community Reinvestment Act of 1977, to accommodate the bigger banks getting into this business. And now that we've, you know, COVID, the circumstance with George Floyd unfortunately have put a spotlight on us. So a lot of the big banks are calling and saying, how can we get involved with this on some level? And I may need to put together a linked deposit fund or get some sort of a circumstance to allow banks to, you know, at least get a risk profile of a number of these together and say, given a loan to value, getting a debt service coverage covenant, we will go in at a certain dollar amount and provide that direct pay letter credit. Because without it, you have to collapse the corporation.
Our linked deposit initiatives here have been underutilized, although I've had some conversations about, you know, re, re generating new interest in them, but it's certainly a very useful tool. I did want to ask you, as to the legislation, expanding Community Reinvestment Act, is that, is that active? And if so, which legislators are sponsors of that legislation?
Yeah, there, there isn't any legislative effort but for what, I mean, I've got a team of three people. So we're, we're trying to keep our head above water and we're more interested in not the big pictures. Not, it's not that we're not interested in it. It's a longer haul to change legislation.
Well, there may be some.
Federal level, but.
There, there could be some muscle here to give some energy behind that as well.
Yeah, certainly. Now, our US Senator was on the Senate Banking Committee, Jeff Merkley. He happens to live five blocks and has his permanent residence in the zip codes. He's very interested in supporting in this. So we talked with him and his staff about, he went from the Banking Committee to Foreign Relations, which he wanted to be, but he retained his Senate Banking or his Banking Committee staff. So I think there's some path for us to, you know, push on some longer-term kind of engagement with banks. In the meantime, banks are, you know, scrambling to do something right and good for the community right now. So it's a, it is a good time to engage them in some, and they're looking for something new, you know, which otherwise they would have been like, wow, that, that's a little untested and, and weird or different. And, you know, in fact, that's exactly what I got when I initiated this with two foundations locally, the two big ones, when it was in a conceptual phase, I went to both of them and said, here's the vision, here's some data behind it. This is what we want to do. And they both came back to me, they obviously talked to each other and said, you know, John, that's too complicated. There's too many moving parts and nobody's done it before. So we wish you were following somebody else's model. Four years later, they're both very interested.
Yeah, interesting.
So Vice Chairman, there were a few people that had their hands up. Just, I, I don't know if you had any follow-up questions of Vice Chairman before I turn it over to some of them, but we did have on deck Commissioner De Laurentis, then Commissioner Raymer, and then Commissioner Aglapi.
Yeah, let's hear from all of them in whatever order they raise their hands. Thank you.
I think I was called next. Is that correct, Commissioner Anaya? So, yes, thank you. Kristi De Laurentis. I represent 45 suburban communities within Cook County, many of which are resource-strapped and have low-income households. So had a question for you. How did, so I understand you identified four. How did you limit? Because, you know, there's others that likely could have qualified as well within other communities with, with various zip codes that could have qualified. And you started with four and, and so that's always, you know, some, you know, perceived as difficult to do, to make those decisions. And then also, were you putting criteria in for the applicants in terms of the investors? Did you have income restriction, other eligibility, other than residency within the, within the zip code?
Okay, those are two good questions. Number one, you know, we didn't know this boat would float. Honestly, we didn't know what the demand would be. We started teaching classes, facilitating the owing to owning classes. And unfortunately, we had trained a couple hundred people, but we didn't have the legal path to open it up for investment. We had built up a lot of energy. And then when we launched it on the first of November, 2017, we had 13 investors in the first two months. We thought, oh no. And people told us, yeah, we were interested. And then the investment wasn't there. So we had built up energy and we had, it had dissipated. Well, the energy came shortly thereafter and re-picked up. But, you know, we, for that reason, 185, we knew that we needed to buy out 450,000 in debt. We thought the investors had come in probably in the mid-range, around $50, $40, $50. They were all coming in higher. The average investment in the first three years was 80 bucks during COVID. It went down to around 60. So we had to look at a function of, you know, what, how many people, what's the number of investors we can get? And, you know, and is there going to be demand? And we, we wanted it to be transboundary out of the city into the county. So that's why we picked an extra couple of zip codes. So it was really a matter of, of also identifying, we do this community mapping to where the affordable housing was because we want to capture renters. Now, in terms of criteria, we didn't want this to feel like you're signing up for food stamps or anything. So anybody can invest, the policemen across the sphere, the fire department, teachers. We think that reinforces the characteristic that it's an investment for everybody. The firemen with a pension plan, they may think, oh, that's kind of fun. I want to be involved and supportive, but they don't need it in the same way. But we, so we didn't want anybody to feel like they were signed up for food stamps or tenant or anything. It was just like, if you want to be involved, you're in. It isn't income qualified. By the nature of the product, we're, we're getting to the people we wanted to anyway. But it didn't feel like a government program to them and they liked that.
Yeah, thank you. Good, good insight. Thanks.
Then we had Commissioner Raymer and then followed by Commissioner Aglapi.
Hi, John, thanks for this incredible presentation. I have some questions on like the grant funding side of things, the donations that, you know, you're looking at. I come from a corporate donor and, and community giving for BMO Harris Bank. And this whole concept is really interesting to me. What would the donations, just strict, you know, charitable donations go towards? Is that like you're hiring folks to kind of recruit and, and socialize and handle the programmatic elements?
Yeah, on a local basis, that's one of the sessions we go through. What do the operations look like? I mean, they still run themselves, right? You need, you need a staff. So in our case, we've got position descriptions written for, for a full-time staff to start that manages the property manager, this professional property manager, but you manage the property manager. You know, you pull the leads out of the gutter if somebody doesn't clean, you know, paint attention to the property, the tenants. And then, and then guiding the practices, the bank accounts and the flow of funds, et cetera. And then the, the classes also facilitating the classes and getting the local, you know, community leaders that teach the class. That's about a half-time position. Now, we're at the point where, so it's on a long-term basis. Right now, we're at a point five for the manager of the CIT and about a point five for the education manager. So the banks typically love that part of the funding because of the financial.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And just even just throwing this out there for the entire commission as we're talking through this whole thing, there's a real interest in like, you know, a collaboration of private, public and nonprofit collaborations. And knowing the funding community here in Chicago, that I think would be catnip to local funders. I mean, you've got some big, you know, foundations on the hook here. But, you know, if you're looking for local folks and businesses to be interested in this, I think the, the concept of, you know, what are your key nonprofits that we would want to fold into this? That youth component that you said, oh my God, how many youth organizations are out there trying to get kids entrusted in entrepreneurialism and investing junior achievement comes to mind? And, you know, and so you have these like trusted organizations plugged into this new concept, right? That hasn't truly been long-term, you know, assessed. I think that would be an interesting thing to explore for this zone here. And also, it's not just like a government kind of thing. If we have like the nonprofit community in this, the comfort level with providing donations to this kind of, everybody in the pool situation, I think would go down a bit easier to, to funders, right? Because they've got trusted nonprofits who know how to handle donations and, you know, make sure the impact is happening. Get engaged. Really, I'd love to learn more on this one.
Wendy.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
I'd like to build on what Wendy said, if I may. And that is, if we look at this as a multi-stakeholder social enterprise essentially, where you have the public sector, the private sector, the philanthropic sector, all collaborating, yet each getting the benefit of its bargain, notwithstanding the fact that those bargains are difference, yet all pulling together and galvanized around mission. I think that's the framing that's going to carry the day here. So I think Wendy's point is very well made.
No, you're both exactly right on, just a quick reflection is, is what we found in a number of these cities is that it's been, other than the Kresge one I mentioned, that was a big foundation funding four cities at once. Most of the cities have been funded by a local community foundation to do the feasibility study. And while $25,000 isn't a lot of money, it's enough that it, the community foundation learns along with the, and oftentimes participates in the feasibility process. So then they understand that there's a role for them post-feasibility.
Thank you.
Have you, just one more quick question. Is this your, your beginning salvo here in Chicago? Or what other nonprofits have spoken to you like here? Like who else is aware of this?
There's been a number of these, I mentioned these smart grad students that were in Chicago, all women, young women and super savvy, you know, from Harvard, who knows where all their, their, and they've been asking questions. And then they pulled the mayor's office in. So I had a big meeting with the mayor's office and with Helene Gale at the Chicago Community Trust. It's been some months ago, and they were talking about using transit district corridors and using some of the, the land adjacent to that to put into community ownership. I think they were thinking about not the depth of community ownership we were talking about. So I think we added something to the table, which really was dispersing the ownership widely in a neighborhood as opposed to a couple of the known bigger developers, you know, whether they're from that neighborhood or not. But that's, that's been months ago and we haven't, we haven't picked anything up till Mark discovered me and we're, we're together today.
Thank you. So those are good leads for us. There was one other commissioner that had a question, at least one other.
Yes, Commissioner Aglapi.
Please.
Hi, this was jumping off on what Commissioner Freeman and Commissioner Elaine's points were earlier regarding, you know, what other banks have, have contributed to the capital stack? And the follow-up regarding, alluding to the CRA, the federal CRA. I'd just like to lift up for this commission, the Illinois State CRA, which was created last year. I actually led a webinar on what the IDFPR rules to assess banks in Illinois for transparency. So that when collect data that never has done before, how does Illinois additionally assess the banks on collecting data specific to 1071 race, gender and ethnicities? But additionally, what can we, as this commission, propose as recommendations to IDFPR? And I can share that letter that we had for our coalition and a presentation that I did on what some of the small business lens are, but, you know, they are welcoming comments right now. That was the first round by December 27th. But I think it's worth for the county to weigh in, in so much as this project and others is, how do we look to assess the traditional banks that are the financial institutions that are going to be helped to the IDFPR's rural transparency, which is essentially civil rights legislations for banks as an extension of the equal credit opportunity act? Now we have that law to complement the federal law. What can we propose that banks additionally be measured on in Illinois? So that there's equitable and fair lending, particularly to communities of color that have been impacted historically by redlining and in LMI community statewide. So just kind of want to bring it back because I know, John, you brought that up. Like some of that is going into the CRA and systemic. I just wanted to share that, like, and I can share a link in the chat, like to what our letter was that groups like New Covenant signed on to and Women Employed. What it is in this open comment period, what the rules should look like to assess banks now that we do have a state CRA law, which thanks to the Illinois Black Caucus, we're passing that as, as one of its economic pillars.
Carrie, thank you for that contribution. That's awfully important. Could you tell us how much time remains within the comment period?
We submitted comments as a coalition and other groups by December 27th, but that's not going to be the end of it. So I think they're going to come back with more iterations on it. And I'm more than happy to bring back and lead with this group when the next comment period is on what these rules look like. Because it's been a number of years that they should have implemented 1071 of Dodd-Frank federally for the CRA to assess and, and assure banks are collecting race, ethnicity and gender data, which they really have not done before. That's going to be part of it. But what is it additionally, when we look at equity and inclusion? What is it additionally? We want to hold Illinois financial institutions up when it comes to the economic developments such as projects, such as these? And what are the indicators that we would like to see the banks better engage the community?
I, I for one would love to learn more about that and be helpful to the extent I can in helping to craft further responses as additional iterations are presented. So if you would be so kind as to keep us informed and share with us what you have, when you have it, and we as a commission can then evaluate how best to, to contribute to that effort. And thank you so much again for bringing this forward.
Yeah, I typed in the letter, it says 1213, but we submitted it by 1227. And we did that with Housing Action Illinois, Woodstock Institute, other groups like I said, Women Employed, New Covenant Community Development Corporation, signed on to it, Women's Business Development Center. I think it's not the most sexiest topics that people have in terms of advocacy, but so incredibly important systemically about reversing the structural bias that's embedded in the banks and financial systems.
Awfully important. Thank you for that. So we'll look forward to updates from you on that topic. And to the extent the commission can get involved, please keep us informed and I would love to participate in that effort. Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from commissioners? I, I don't see any. Does that mean there are none?
I believe Commissioner Cooley just raised his hand.
Roger.
Thank you. Remembering a presentation we had at least a year ago, maybe two years ago now, regarding tax rates for commercial properties and essential exemptions or rebates? And wondering if that's something like, you know, a commercial development came, that's something where a Cook County policy that we can look at if, you know, if a, you know, if a project came forward that was structured this way, could it be set up to give, you know, an automatic tax rebate or incentive moving these kind of projects forward?
Yeah, that's definitely something we could look at. I know that that's something that Howard mentioned earlier about, you know, the role of EDAC. I am the vice com before our committee. And I think that there's definitely opportunity. I know Mark mentioned, and, and John, you know, just reiterated that, I mean, nothing like that has occurred yet. Government has not gotten. Um I mean, nothing like that has occurred yet. Government has not gotten involved in a project like this. So we would be the first if we were to look into uh any type of incentives or any type of um you know, support systems that we're creating for, for, for such a, such a project um in social enterprise. So I think um.
This may be a ripe topic for community benefit agreements. Uh where uh in exchange for certain subsidies or incentives, uh a developer or a seller for that matter uh or a buyer uh would find it in its best economic self-interest uh to e- expose these kinds of opportunities to uh uh community members. And I think the government could have a key role in catalyzing that kind of an initiative.
We're even thinking about like the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund, Invest Southwest in the city, like would a project like this get a leg up in some of those?
Uh I have a question for John. I mean, do you have any, you know, thoughts about any government roadblocks or tools that you have seen or observed in, in this work? That you would recommend us to take a look at or not do or implement from a government perspective?
We did this so exclusive of government support that uh we didn't get bound by, you know, the sort of things that can entangle um for better or worse. You know, I think those doors should be open for, like just one quick, for instance, when you're talking about taxes. Our the investors building, their building pays close to thirty thousand dollars in Multnomah County taxes a year. Now, if we pull that, it's somehow we got a tax abatement, didn't have to pay that, that would who, that'd triple their uh dividend. Um nobody's brought it up. And we, we let the investors know, you know, you're, you're contributing to the neighborhood through the taxes that you, the building you own is paying, but it's still generating yield. So, you know, we're a good citizen. We pay the taxes to the county. But we didn't get any subsidy whatsoever from them. We didn't ask for it initially either.
John, let me ask you a question that kind of cues off what you just said. Was there uh a uh specific uh deliberate decision to keep this as a private sector effort without tapping into government support or resources? Or did it just play out that way?
It, it played out that way, Mark. You know, we had initially gone, the first thing we did before going to get a direct pay letter credit was to go to the city council. And we had one advocate, um but the city treasurer and said, you know, I can't recommend this as a long-term thing for us to commit to. You know, and I think we were lucky in retrospect because uh legis, the, the bodies changed, the elected leaders changed. And we need a long-term guarantee to sit in place. And the direct pay letter was more predictable, even though it's escalated. So our letter of credit is at like seven hundred thousand now. The underlying mortgage is just under eight hundred. So you can imagine the uh, the banker sweating when we renew the letter of credit every year. It gets to be, we're going in opposite direction. You're paying down the mortgage and this exposure exists. So um but I think that's a more solid replication plan than getting a government guarantee or that role in other cities. So it, but it was the way it played out.
Well, thank you very much. Are there other questions from commissioners or comments or reactions? Uh Patrick, do you have something you want to talk about?
Uh no, I, I was just highlighting an answer for Roger who brought up the Invest Southwest as John was also pointing to that as well. And I was simply stating uh as part of our um Invest Southwest goals for you know, getting the transformation and the development and investment that we're aiming for. We would love to see projects that come to us that are at some level of, you know, funding uh fully sourced, right? And so, you know, if what John has shared with us today could be something that would lead to that. We would love to see projects coming in from those areas. Obviously, it's a priority for the mayor um for those key commercial corridors in those underserved communities, much like what uh Jerry was pointing to, you know, how we build and drive down towards equity and equitable investment with TODs and all this stuff that leads to job creation in these communities. And so like, we would love to, to, you know, um certainly see John be a, a key player in this universe of, you know, helping to deliver on that kind of investment and, and development, not only in the city, obviously selfishly speaking for, you know, the city, but certainly countywide. You know, um the change we want to see in the city is certainly the change we want to see in the Southland, South suburbs and Southside. So um I just gave Karen a talking point and uh um but yeah, you know, that's, that's what we want to see. I was just trying to just, you know, um address Roger's comment in the chat box. But yeah, thanks uh Chairman for.
Observe that. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, to that, to that end, uh this is Karen. Um to that end, what, what are we thinking about in terms of scalability, like and, and not just scalability, but replicability? Because again, we need it both in the city, in lots of places in the city, and then in lots of places in the county.
I, I can't answer for the city obviously here, but let me just give you a couple of examples of what some other cities are doing. Some of them are considering doing a necklace of properties, like, you know, within one geography. So let's start and see if we get the demand with one property and then build, you know, do another one down the street, like along a corridor or something. And I love that idea of a necklace because you're not putting all your eggs into like three buildings and hoping you get enough money to buy out the debt of those, but start with one and get a couple other in the queue and create kind of a necklace of ownership. Now, I think there could be a really unique collaboration for separate registered C corporations in different, I mean, in a geography that's big and diverse and with the population of Cook County, you could certainly make you know, an unconnected, separate necklaces or something, but something that has a internal Cook County collaboration and learning and metrics for performance tracking, sharing, et cetera, that could be really fascinating. At your scale, it's, you know, you, you're your own state and, you know, it's, it could be something really, I think, quite impactful and, and big.
I would assume there would be, I assume there would be some utility in having geographic separation so as to diversify risk. Uh whereas if you're having it, you know, essentially block by block, it seems to me you're potentially concentrating at least specific geographic risk. Uh so I, I, I would think that to the extent you can mitigate risk through that and a variety of other strategies of diversification that might be of some value.
Yeah, Mark, I think you're right. If you were willing to extend the geography of zip codes that widely, which may break down the, you know, the proximity value, may not. I mean, if people own a building way across town, they're never going to go to. But they like the part of the CR, the CIT that's right down the street. I don't know. That'd be just a twist on the model. We're open to it.
Okay. Other questions or comments from commissioners?
Well, thank you all. Keeping eighteen of you.
John, I would like to, I would like to thank you on behalf of the commission. And also, you know, I like to describe the commission as a convener, a collaborator and a catalyst. And it uh seems to me that you've challenged us to wear all three of those hats here. And there seems to be enthusiasm uh within the commission. And uh so I, I look forward to receiving your transmittal with respect to the steps of the, kind of what this plan looks like. And uh I'll share that with the commissioners and uh we'll have uh Commissioner Freeman uh pick up the ball. And uh I want to be involved in that group as well. And anyone else who would like to participate actively in considering how we take this and where we take it. Uh please reach out to Commissioner Freeman or to myself. Uh I always say the time is our enemy. Uh so let's hit the ground running. And now that we're in a new year and a new unit of time and a new strategy, uh it seems to me timely, appropriate and necessary that we consider this uh carefully and deliberately. So John, thanks again for uh sharing your ideas and your leadership with us. And uh we welcome it and we hope to be able to uh come back to you for advice as our conversations unfold.
Yep, I'm available. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. And back to, back to the chair.
Thank you very much, Chair Lane. And, and thanks once again, John, for your presentation. As you can see, most of the commissioners were able to jump in and ask questions. Um everybody's showing so much enthusiasm for this opportunity. So thank you uh for this wonderful presentation. Um the next item on our agenda was a committee report. We know that uh unfortunately, um our committees have not been able to meet. Um our vice chair uh just made the announcement of the new structure. So um we're going to have to skip that item. Um there doesn't seem to be any uh at least formal updates from any meetings. I know that we're still discussing with some of the uh chairmans of the, the committees on how we proceed with the current pending projects that were in committees. Um I know that that's something that maybe um a vice chair lean and, and myself will probably be meeting with, with uh the chairs of the independent committees to, to identify the next steps. Um following that item on our agenda was new business. I don't know if there's any uh announcements or any new business that uh folks want to take the floor in making the announcement. Um I'll turn it over to Vice Chairman Lane. If there's anything that we missed to announce, any new other business? I know we mentioned the monthly meetings. Everybody should have that. Um but was there anything, any other new business of a chairman that we had and that we could turn it over to the, the remainder of the members if there's any announcements?
I, I have nothing further to add, uh Chairman.
Great, thank you. I see Commissioner Raymer raised your hand.
Yeah, I just have a, a quick question regarding, um you know, the remainder of the uh meetings for the rest of the year. Um is there an ability uh at all to kind of get a, a preview of perhaps who is scheduled to speak for those months? Um so that we can kind of see what they are ahead of time. Um and maybe do pre-research, pre-reading, pre-thinking if we want to jump in, do one of the ad hoc things. I know it's like impossible to have all of them um decided right now or anything, but if there's a way you have people lined up, let's, let's hear about them.
I can give you a sneak preview in the next couple of months. Um uh next month, we will have a representative of the Obama Foundation. And uh the, in March, we will have a representative of the Chicago Community Trust. And I'm working with each of those organizations to develop their actionable social policy recommendations. So stay tuned. Uh but uh this will be uh the caliber of uh player with whom we're going to be interacting. And uh I think that's going to be a, a significant uh upgrades to the quality of the uh output that the commission's going to be able to produce. So that at least is for the first quarter. That's what we have on the agenda. Chairman Anaya, I think that may be it. If you want to uh adjourn the meeting unless there's something else for anyone to say. Uh she seems to be. Roger, you wanted to say something?
Just wondering for next time, since we're, we're just entering into the new legislative session and Commissioner Aglopine was highlighting some legislation that's, you know, in process. If there's anything that, if there's commissioners who want to highlight certain priorities.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And uh, you know, uh just as we heard today about the Illinois Community Reinvestment Act and how we might contribute to its improvements. Uh similarly, uh we should all stay uh attuned to what is in the works and see how we might add value to ensure that there are positive social externalities and that any negative social externalities are minimized or avoided. So I think it's a very good observation, Roger, and I think good advice to all of the commissioners. So thank you. Commissioner Anaya, has she uh surfaced or perhaps technological challenges?
She's having technical problems, issues. Hi, how are you? Happy New Year, Mark.
Happy New Year to you. I owe you one now. You know that. My turn. You know, I'm wearing a tie too. I'll bring it. Okay, I, in the absence of the chair, I will take the liberty of adjourning the meeting on my own and suffer the consequences if it was premature. So thanks to each and every one of you. We're off to a great start in the new year. And I wish you all safe, health and successful year for you and those you love. So good night, everyone.
Thank you, Mark. Be well.
Good night.